We are reconvening in open session. This is the Cabarrus County School Board, Board of Education Business Meeting for Monday, June 8th, 2020. Welcome to all those that are online and those that are participating here on our session. We are going to actually do a roll call of board members to make sure that everybody is here and can hear and can can interact with us. So let me start that real quick. Barry Schumaker, are you here?
I am here.
All right, Carolyn Carpenter.
I'm here.
Cindy Furtvoss.
Here.
David Harrison.
Present.
Holly Grimsley.
Here.
And Laura Blackwell.
Here.
And then myself, Rob Walter, Board Chair. So we are all here. We have a quorum. So we are going to go ahead and get started here with adopting the agenda. The one modification is we were in a our closed session earlier and we do have a need to go back into closed session. So I'm not sure we need to modify our agenda to the end to add another closed session.
Move to modify the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Harrison to modify the agenda to add a closed session. Anybody a second?
Second.
All right, second by Holly. All in favor of adopting the agenda with the modification, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Okay, that motion passes. We had our agenda is set. So we will move on to item five here, which says a person, the June 8th Personnel Recommendations and Closed Session Minutes. So the first one was to call for the approval, motions to approve the June 8 Personnel Recommendations. And that includes the new AP at Concord Middle School.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, whoops. We have a motion by Ms. Furtvoss. Did I hear David first? Second by David.
By Barry.
Okay.
Second, Cindy.
All right, we'll give it to Barry this time. All right, so second by Barry to approve the personnel recommendations for June 8th. So all in favor of that one, say, please say aye.
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 Say no? Okay, that motion passes seven zero. And our second item related to our closed session was the approval of closed session minutes. So we had two minutes to approve. Those were from May 11th and May 26th. So can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
And hold confidential?
So revise that to approve the minutes and hold them confidential?
Yes, we need to always state that.
Yes. So I have a motion by David, a second by Cindy. All in favor of approving our closed session minutes and keeping them confidential, please say aye.
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 Aye? Anybody opposed? Say nay. Okay, that motion passes. Those minutes are approved. All right, we'll move on to item six, which is our recognitions portion. And again, we'll be doing this virtually. But item 6.01 is a Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month. Ms. Glenda Jones, are you on the line with us?
Yes, I am. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Board Members, and everyone listening in on the live stream. Tonight, we honor our final Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for the 2019-2020 school year. And even though current circumstances do not allow us to gather in person to celebrate, we are excited to recognize another outstanding CCS teacher. We say a heartfelt thank you to Mr. Tim Vaughn and Hillbush Ford for their continued support of our teachers with this recognition program. And we thank them for their flexibility in mailing our honorees their awards during our COVID-19 closure. Our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for June is Mrs. Laura Abernathy. Mrs. Abernathy is a first grade teacher at WM Irvin Elementary School. She was nominated for this award by a student who wrote, "I want her to win because she is a great teacher. She is super kind. She shows us that she loves us. She is important to me and our whole class. She makes me feel happy. She works really hard with us. I am not always in a good mood, but Mrs. Abernathy helps me by being super duper patient with me. She calms me down by reminding me to take a deep breath, count, and then blow it out. That helps me to calm down so I can do my work." The student concluded the nomination by saying, "I know she loves me and I," capital L-O-V-E, "love her." Mrs. Abernathy, thank you for being a wonderful first grade teacher and for showing your students kindness and love that they can feel and see. Congratulations on your selection as our June Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month.
Fantastic. All right, so item 6.02 is Teacher of the Year, Board of Education Representative. Ms. Glenda Jones, it's still on you.
All right, so we're, we actually, I think I have the next two items, and this is kind of a segue. But tonight, we would like to thank Kate Highsmith, the 2019-2020 Teacher of the Year for her service as the teacher liaison to the Board of Education this past school year. As a global inquiry and design teacher at Weddington Hills Elementary, Kate's dedication to her students, school, and community is unparalleled. Kate, we are grateful for your commitment to the education profession. You have been a valuable member of the Board of Education, and your professionalism does not go unnoticed. Thank you for your time and dedication as a teacher liaison and for your service to the students and families of Cabarrus County Schools. Now, having said that, as a thank you to Kate, we want to welcome tonight, Ms. Emily Wagner, third grade teacher at Arbrown McAllister Elementary School, who was named the Cabarrus County Schools CCS Teacher of the Year on Friday, May the 15th, 2020, with a surprise announcement at her home. And I confess, we had to tell our neighbor who came out just a little bit before we told Emily, because it was interesting that we were in the neighborhood to convey this with COVID. Wagner has a Bachelor of Arts in Elementary Education and Exceptional Children General Curriculum from UNC Charlotte, and was recently selected to participate in an administrative leadership cohort for a Master's in School Administration through UNCC. She began her teaching career in Cabarrus County Schools in 2014 as a third grade teacher at Wyancoff Elementary School. And in 2019, she transitioned to Arbrown McAllister Elementary School. According to Principal Blanchard, Wagner is both a leader within her classroom and throughout Arbrown McAllister STEM Elementary School. Her focus on excellence and attitude of high standards are contagious to all that are around her. There is no limit to her giving as her eagerness for student success is shown in everything that she does. She is dedicated, hardworking, passionate, and humble. Her commitment to her students is truly outstanding. Arbrown McAllister STEM Elementary School is a better place because Emily Wagner is a part of it. We would like to congratulate and welcome Emily Wagner, our 2020-2021 Cabarrus County Schools Teacher of the Year. Emily will be serving as the teacher representative on the Cabarrus County Board of Education beginning in July and continuing for the 2020-2021 school year. We would also like to extend our gratitude to all of our sponsors for the Teacher of the Year and recognize our gold sponsors, which include CCEF, Greater Charlotte Automobile Dicklers Association, Concord Mills Mall, The Great Wolf Lodge, the Miriam and Robert Hayes Charitable Trust, Public Supermarket Charities, and Sea Life for making our Teacher of the Year Celebration Week a great success. So Kate, we say goodbye to you in this role, and we welcome Emily as she starts this next year as the teacher liaison for Cabarrus County Schools.
And I also would like to say thank you to Kate. You've been amazing. The difference that you make in your classroom is just fantastic. And the perspective you shared with us is really appreciated. Would love to give you a hug, but since we're doing this virtually, is there anything you'd like to add or say to us, parting words?
I do. Thank you, Chairperson Walter. I had a little thing written up if I could just take a minute of our time to say thank you to Dr. Louder for his steady leadership all year long, but particularly since March 13th, 2020. Thank you to all of the county office staff. Um, to Dr. Hill, Ms. Angela Wood, Bart Tolbert, and our district level directors, Mrs. Reeves, Dr. Roth, and Mr. Alred, who have shown their professionalism and guidance to all our CCS teachers during their weekly video messages that they have sent out during this time. Thank you to the Board of Education for inviting me to be a member of your board and the opportunity to share my perspective. I have gained so much from this time, and I appreciate each and every one of you. Thank you to our entire CCS teachers and staff whose various jobs are too many to list, but who have been dedicating to meeting the physical, educational, and social emotional needs of our students during these last three months. They have prepared and delivered meals, facilitated distributed and collected technology, prepared content material, and weekly read alouds, edited and re-edited videos, called, emailed, translated, hosted virtual Teams meetings, packed up desks and cubbies, sanitized door knobs and hallways, and I am so proud to be part of this entire CCS family. And I'm honored to have represented you guys and to call you my coworkers. Congratulations to our new Teacher of the Year, Emily Wagner. She's going to knock your socks off. I'll look forward to our doors reopening in August of 2020, not as what we once were, but new, better, stronger, and more just tomorrow. Thank you. Being the CCS Teacher of the Year for 2019-2020 has been a privilege and an honor. I appreciate you all.
I appreciate you. Any board members want to say anything to Kate?
Yeah, Kate, this is Cindy. I just want to let you know how much I have appreciated all the Teacher of the Years, but especially we both served on the Budget Committee, and I appreciate your your frankness, your ideas, your honesty. It has helped make me a better person, too.
Kate, this is David. I feel like anytime I could look for a teacher perspective and frank and honest and heartfelt comments, that you certainly provided that, and we're richer for you. Thank you.
Kate, this is Carolyn, and again, what my other board members have said, ditto. And your insight was always so helpful when we turned to you and said, hey, what do you think what the teachers would say? You were, you always stepped at the plate and helped us out, and we really did appreciate that so much. And you didn't hesitate to say, hey, this is what they think, or this is what, you know, this is what we need. And we appreciated that, and we're going to miss you. Come visit us again. Come see us. Don't forget about us. And again, we appreciate so much what the teachers have done. We, it hasn't gone unnoticed. And y'all have stepped up to the plate, and we appreciate that. The teachers have done outstanding, and staff have done outstanding since this virus is, and, and we have been watching. We've noticed it. And the children, we, we've seen what a difference is made, and thank you. Uh, you know, we do appreciate it so much, and we're going to miss you.
Hey Kate, it's Holly. Listen, I just wanted to say thank you for all you've done. We started this position when I was on the board back years ago first, and it was just a great addition to the Board of Education. And every one of you brought a great perspective, and I just appreciate everything you've done. And it's kind of caught me back up to speed as well with some conversations you and I've had. So thank you, and we wish you the best.
Kate, I'll sway in. Also, this is Barry. Thank you for all your insights, for taking, taking stances, even though I know that they may not have been the most popular ones. But I appreciate the fact that you are frank with us and you are honest with us, and that means a lot. And I can, I hope you continue to carry it back to your classroom. You teach your students to, to be insightful and honest and to, to, to learn a lot about their education and to understand why, why they're out there and what they're learning and the future that they have. And I know you're preparing them well, and we couldn't ask for a more professional person to be on our board this year, and we appreciate having you. Thank you.
All right, can I go? This is Laura.
Yes, Laura.
Kate, I just wanted to tell you that it's been so fun sitting next to you, and I'm definitely going to miss you. And I echo all of the things that everyone else has already said. And hopefully I'll get to see you maybe on Sundays in Food Line when we're doing our grocery shopping.
It's disturbing. Emily, are you on the call? We'd like, we're excited about you. Big shoes to fill, but if you'd like to say anything?
Just want to say thank you to the Board of Education for allowing me to sit on this role. And thank you to the CCS community, and I'm excited to serve alongside you guys next year. So thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so 6.04 is Student Scholarships Achievements, and we have our Deputy Superintendent Brian Schultz. Are you on the call?
I sure am. Good evening, Chairperson Walter, members of the board, Superintendent Louder. It's really my pleasure to showcase and highlight some of the superstars across our district this evening. So I'll start out with some major scholarship winners that we have. I'll move to the Service Academy appointments, and then I'll recognize our rising 11th graders who will be entering into the school, North Carolina School of Science and Math. So to start with the scholarship recognitions, we have Jasmine Omeni-Ampung. She's a, at Concord, or I'm sorry, Cox Mill High School. And Jasmine will be attending North Carolina A&amp;T. She's a proud first generation American who celebrates her Ghanaian roots, is eager to study economics with a law concentration. She plans a career as a public interest attorney. She received the Cheatem White Scholarship, which is valued at over $130,000. It's a fully funded four-year scholarship. It covers all the costs of tuition, student fees, housing, meals, textbooks, laptop, supplies, and then also provides four summers of fully funded enrichment and networking opportunities that may include international travel and study. So congratulations, Jasmine. I have Alexandra Caseris Torres. She's a student at Cabarrus Kannapolis Early College High School, and she'll be attending UNC Chapel Hill in the fall. She received the Diversity Scholars Program Scholarship to Appalachian State, valued at approximately $80,000, its full in-state tuition and fees, plus a one-time $2,500 study abroad stipend. Congratulations, Alessandra. We have Keely Darbit. Keely is a Cabarrus Technical Early College student. She's attending Pfeiffer, Pfeiffer University in the fall for nursing. She won the Presidential Scholarship, valued at approximately $80,000. The scholarship covers 67% of the tuition over four years, which is about $20,000 annually. Congratulations, Keely. We also have Taylor Graham. Taylor is a student at Northwest Cabarrus High School. She will be attending Wake Forest University in the fall, focusing on environmental research. She won the Wake Forest College Scholarship, valued at approximately $225,000. She won an additional $22,000 scholarship, the George F. Henkin Scholarship. And, and so altogether, she totals almost a quarter of a million dollars in scholarship money. So congratulations, Taylor. We have Allison Hawa from Concord High School. Allison will be attending the University of South Carolina in, in the fall. She received the Stamps Scholarship, valued at approximately $191,000. It's a four-year scholarship to the University of South Carolina, provides money for tuition, fees, and also includes a $10,000 enrichment fund to study abroad or pursue personal research. We have Alex Hefner. He's a student at Hickory Ridge High School. He'll be attending Davidson College in the fall and receive a men's golf scholarship valued at $220,000. Alex is widely considered to be one of the top amateur golfers in the state of North Carolina. Congratulations, Alex. Next, we have Sarah Houston. Sarah is a student at Cabarrus Kannapolis Early College High School. She'll be attending Duke University. She won the Duke University Grant, which is valued at $80,000. It covers the cost, some of the costs of tuition, fees, and room and board. We have another Cheatem White Scholarship winner. That's Sharla Kirkpatrick from Concord High School. So she'll be attending North Carolina A&amp;T University in the fall. Again, that scholarship is valued at $130,000. And again, covers the cost of tuition, student fees, housing, meals, textbook, laptops, supplies, and travel, and personal expenses. And then also includes that fully funded enrichment and networking opportunity that includes international travel and study. Congratulations, Sharla. Another Concord High School spider, that's Carson Coon. Carson will be attending UNC Charlotte in the, in the fall. He was awarded the Levine Scholarship, valued at over $105,000, the four-year scholarship. It includes tuition, room, board, and a grant to implement a service project for four summers of experiences. Next, we have Jenna Peterson. She attends JM Robinson High School. In the fall, she'll be attending UNC Wilmington. She won the North Carolina Department of Military and Veterans Affairs Scholarship, valued at $72,000. The scholarship will cover the cost of tuition, fees, and room and board. Congratulations, Jenna. Next, we have Cameron Rose. Cameron is a student at Hickory Ridge High School. Cameron will be attending Virginia Tech in the, in the fall. Cameron received a full ride athletic track and field scholarship valued at approximately $200,000. Cameron has won multiple indoor and outdoor championships in track and field during his time at Hickory Ridge. And last on this page of scholarships is Brian Wilson. Brian is a senior at JM Robinson High School. He will be attending North Carolina State University in the fall. Brian won the Parks Scholarship, which is valued at approximately $111,000. Will cover the cost, tuition, fees, room, board, travel expenses, books, and supplies, and personal expenses. So congratulations to those 12 students for their major scholarship awards and scholar, and, and earnings. It is really, really impressive, and, and those come at a lot of hard work and dedication to, to your work in school. Next up, we have four students here in Cabarrus County Schools that were awarded Service Academy appointments. And I'll just say in general, these Service Academy recipients, these are valued at close to a half a million dollars a year, or a half a million dollars for the, over the course of the four years for attending. And they typically receive the room, board, tuition, fees, and of course, a lot of, a lot of training, a lot of sweat that goes with that. Uh, and, and they also receive a monthly paycheck, basically, as they start their, the entry of their career. Um, so we have Ethan Bailey. Ethan's at JM Robinson High School. Uh, he's been awarded the Service Academy Appointment for United States Air Force Academy. Ethan was awarded the, his Air Force JRTC at high schools, awarded the unit's highest individual award every semester, called the Outstanding Cadet Award during his four years in JRTC. He was awarded, he was also spotlighted for his work with the Tuskegee Airmen, Air Commando, and Air Force Association Annual Awards for being in the top 1% in academics, leadership, and professionalism. Ethan earned the Air Force JRTC Achievement Award five times, and was distinguished, and was a distinguished graduate at the Summer Cadet Leadership Course. Ethan has served as an officer, officer in numerous other high school organizations, and such as National Honor Society, National Beta Club, led his teammates as cross-country and track and field captain. He was a decorated four-year varsity cross-country and track and field athlete, earning MVP awards on multiple occasions. He's done over 300 hours of community service as a cadet, and was recently one of 150 students across the country selected to attend the Flight Academy Scholarship, to, to receive the Flight Academy Scholarship at Embry-Riddle University. It was an eight-week, fully funded scholarship valued at $20,000. And upon his return, he was in possession of his private pilot's license. Pretty impressive, Ethan. So congratulations on your appointment to the Air Force Academy. Uh, we have another Air Force Academy Appointment. That's Nolan Philip Carey. He goes to Hickory Ridge High School. And Nolan will be playing for football for the Air, United States Air Force Academy. And he will, he will be wearing that lightning bolt on the side of his helmet as he's out there on the field. Uh, we also have another Academy Appointment. That's a Naval Academy. He'll be in Annapolis. It's Dorian Williams from Concord High School. Dorian is an outstanding IB student who competes in martial arts. He's an Eagle Scout. He's a varsity football player and active community volunteer. And we would like to congratulate Dorian on his appointment to the Naval Academy. And lastly, in terms of the Service Academy appointments, we have Louis, known to his friends as Colt Haas. Colt is, was appointed to the United States Air Force Academy. He's an outstanding IB student who is also an Eagle Scout. He's a pianist, violinist, master scooter, master scuba diver, chess circuit president, underwater photographer, and a member of the Concord 2A marksmen team. Uh, and congratulations to Colt on his appointment to the US Air Force Academy. Lastly, I'd like to recognize our rising juniors, who will either be attending in person, which is typically residential, and of course, COVID could play a, a number on that. But so we have either residential and/or students who will be attending the North Carolina School of Science and Mathematics online. Again, these are rising juniors. So I'd like to congratulate the following students. So we have Srinadi Elia Perumo from Cox Mill High School. We have Shiva Gaddy Reddy from Cox Mill High School. Tristan McLaurin from Northwest Cabarrus High School. Sanjuna Nella from Cox Mill High School. Anushna Sridhar Parampelli from Cox Mill High School. Brenda Mahendra Kumar Patel from Cox Mill High School. Tasha Sarah Paul from Cox Mill High School. Bedish Tima Cox Mill High School. And we also have Yong Jian Zhang from Cox Mill High School. Congratulations to all of our students who will be attending the North Carolina School of Science and Mathematics. Very proud of you, and, and we know that you'll do well there. Chairperson Walter, that concludes my recognitions for the night. Thank you very much.
Thank you for sharing those accolades, the achievements here for these students. Those are quite, quite amazing. Um, okay, we will move on to our section seven, which is Approval of Minutes. And we have two sets of minutes tonight to approve, and they've been, you've had an opportunity to review them. There are May 4th Work Session and our May 11th Business Meeting. Any changes or comments on those? Hearing none. Does somebody want to make a motion, a motion to approve those?
Move to approve.
Yeah, I have a motion.
Second that.
Mr. Harrison. No, a motion by Mr. Harrison, a second by Mr. Schumaker to approve the minutes for May 4th Work Session and May 11th Business Meeting, as presented. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Say nay. Okay, that motion passes seven zero. All right, so we are moving on to, what do we got? Section eight, which is Board Chair Comments, 8.01. And I have a few items tonight. Um, first is just pointing out to the, to the listening audience that our board members spend a lot of time outside of these board meetings, not only preparing for the meetings, but we also do a lot of training. Um, there's training offered, offered by different entities. A lot of them are the School, North Carolina School Board Association on a number of topics. And just wanted to let folks know that our board members continue to take advantage of the training that's offered. Um, and I think, I'm not sure what our hours are yet, but last year, I think we achieved, all board members met the minimum requirements. Is it 12 hours or is it more than that? More than that?
It's, it's, it's 12 over two years by statute, but it's 12 per year to get recognized by our professional association.
And we've done that last year, and we're well on our way to do that again this, this year.
Yeah, most likely we'll get it again this year.
I also wanted to again point out that, again, this is our seniors this year. You know, a lot of them, they don't have the opportunity to spend time with their classmates in senior year. They missed out on senior field trips, prom, award ceremonies, walk in the halls of the elementary schools with their cap and gown, and then our standard graduation. Uh, but I want to really thank the folks that have gone above and beyond to really help our, make, try to make the senior year special for people. Our staff has gone way above to, to recognize our seniors, from yard signs, delivering those to the houses. We've had businesses that are giving discounts and freebies to our seniors. And we've had individuals. individuals that have reached out to essentially adopt seniors. We have, there's a Adopt Senior in Cabarrus County website or Facebook page that had, I think, recognized or found people to adopt over 1,000 seniors. So I'd like to really just shout out and a thank you to the folks that were running that, Kelly Wilson, Renee Goss, Matt Riggins, and Becky King. I know there's others that are doing very similar things, but it's just been very impressive. At least, you know, we have, I have a senior, so I know he's been part of, part of that and has been very appreciative of that, and everybody that's trying to make this graduation a special, special one. And we look forward to seeing everybody recognizing them this weekend at the Speedway for the graduations. And then lastly, racial injustice and equity obviously is an important issue right now in our country. And Cabarrus County Schools is committed to listening to those concerns, keeping conversations going, and looking for ways that we can do better. We have a mission statement, and that mission statement here, and our governing policy says removal of barriers. And it says on here, "A system of excellent schools prohibits legal discrimination, harassment of staff and students, encourages tolerance and respect, and seeks to eliminate or lessen other barriers that may impede a student's ability or opportunity to learn, including economic disadvantages, poor nutrition, ill health, and lack of transportation." We have actually counted 19 different policies that we have that address anti, that are anti-discrimination, including that. So really, if there's ways we can improve, we're looking to do that. Maybe there's policies we can address to looking at. I think the big policy we have is Policy 171040217230, which is a prohibit against discrimination, harassment, and bullying. So if you all want to take a look at that and get back, see if there's anything we can modify and improve, let's do that and see if we can make a little bit of a difference. So with that, I will hand it over to 8.02, which is Superintendent Comments. Dr. Lauter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The 2019-20 school year will come to an official end later this week, and it certainly has been an interesting and a new, unique year. We will close out the year by honoring our senior class with graduation ceremonies on June 12 and 13, this Friday and Saturday at the Charlotte Motor Speedway. You can visit our graduation website for information about the times and information, and live stream all on the front page of our website. For the continued safety of our students and staff, we've decided to cancel all summer activities until August. This includes summer camps, Kids Plus, and any activities that would involve large gatherings on the campuses. High school athletic practices and workouts, and any county athletic leagues that normally take place on our campuses are canceled until August. We did have today some guidance by the High School Athletic Association about practices which are for very small groups of students, less than 10. And so we did put out on the website today that those practices may begin on July 6. We certainly will see if we move into Phase 3, depends on what the governor says. But right now, practices for very small groups will be, but anything with large groups will still be until the 1st of August. We will be sure to share any changes or updates to this schedule as they become available, or as the governor, or as the state gives us guidelines. We want to make sure parents and students know about the new 2021 school year calendar that the board approved last month. The new calendar, which is in response to COVID-19, is based on new legislation from the General Assembly and from Governor Cooper. Requirements for the calendar include an addition of days designated for remote learning, and earlier start date on August 17. Also means an earlier end date, though, June 3 for the traditional academic year. You can find the new calendar, along with calendars for early colleges and Wolf Meadow, which are slightly different, on our district website, and select the calendars icon from the top of the page. Eligibility information and applications are now available for 2021 school year for the North Carolina pre-K program in Cabarrus County. If you have a child who will be four years old, owner before August 31, and your family's gross income is at or below 75% of the state median, you may be eligible. Visit the Cabarrus Partnership for Children at www.cabarruspartnership.org to learn more about that or to apply for preschool. You can also place completed applications in the dropbox at Mary Frances Wall Center. Our annual parent and student satisfaction surveys are now available. This is an opportunity for you to provide feedback about critical issues such as remote learning during school closures. Please take a few minutes to complete the survey. Your feedback will help us improve. You can access the parent satisfaction survey from the icon on the district website. We're also asking parents to encourage their children in grades 3 through 12 to complete the student satisfaction survey. A link to the survey is posted on each school's website, and they will, the surveys will close on June 12. Also be sure to check out the new edition of the CCS Lookbook, which is the district's digital magazine, at www.cabarrusschools.info. This new edition features interactive articles, photos, and videos about students, staff, and programs. Congratulations to Harrisburg Elementary and Harris Road Middle Schools for receiving three-year extensions on their designation as a Prepared Global Ready School, which recognizes their commitment to ensure students are globally engaged and productive citizens, as well as their teacher's commitment to incorporating global themes into daily lessons and implementing service learning projects based on the United Nations Sustainable Developmental Goals. Congratulations also to WR Odell Primary School first graders, Anib Mandal, who was selected as a winner in the North Carolina Farm-to-School Calendar Art Contest. The winning artwork will be featured along with other winning entries in the 2021 Farm-to-School Calendar. The artwork was one of 13 selected for more than 5,800 entries. I also want to thank, as said earlier, Kate Highsmith, for all that she's done this year as the Teacher of the Year, and for being such a great teacher and such a great representative for all of Cabarrus County teachers. Thank you, Kate, for doing such a great job. And we certainly want to welcome Emily Wagner on board, who is also a great teacher and will be a great representative as she begins her tenure as Teacher of the Year. We look forward to working with you as you come on, Emily. So thank you, and congratulations to both of you ladies. Also want to thank our parents and students for their support, patience, and flexibility as we move through these last few months of school. It's been a learning experience for everybody. As we head into the summer break, please continue to adhere to guidelines and recommendations from health officials, so everyone can stay safe and well. Have a great summer. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for those comments, Dr. Lauter. Next section is 9.01, which is Guest Speakers. And we still haven't figured out how to use the Skype for actual live speakers, but we did allow folks that want to comment or want to provide the board information, way to submit those comments in writing. So Ms. Abbott, do we have any comments this go around?
No, we do not.
Okay. So hopefully, we'll get back to in-person meetings, and we can have live comments again. But otherwise, we will continue to send out information on how you can contact the board to get ahold of us. So we will move on to Item 10, or Section 10, which is the Approval of the June 1 Consent Agenda. We've had a number of items that we talked about last week that we decided to put on consent. So are we still okay with those on consent? And if so, we'll need a motion to approve that, the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the items on the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Shoemaker, a second by Mr. Harrison to approve the items on our consent agenda from June 1. All in favor, any further discussion? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? No? All right, that motion passes 7-0. We will move on to our action items tonight, and we have six of those. So Item 11.01 is the Storm Drainage Easement at WR Odell Elementary School. Mr. Lauter and Mr. Cohn, are you on our call tonight?
Yes, sir, I am. As we talked about this last week, it's a small easement that's going to be in the backside of Odell Elementary School. And I have attached the agreement that was drafted by Cabarrus County and the developer, just for your review. It's just basically, again, it doesn't necessarily require your approval. It does come to you, though, as information, and you wish to approve the fact that they're going to, Cabarrus County is going to move forward with this easement. That's what we need to have done tonight.
Nate, can you share that on the screen?
The storm drainage easement comprises 0.095 acres at the very back of our bus parking lot. And the storm drainage easement was drawn up by Mr. Alexander Ricks out of Charlotte, and it has been reviewed by Cabarrus County Attorney, and he has no changes to be made to it. So it'll just be executed by Cabarrus County once you approve.
Did we find out, is there any revenue associated with this?
No, certainly it's not.
Board members, did we get our questions answered? Okay, if we've got our questions answered, we'll need a motion to approve this storm drainage easement.
Second that.
Motion by Mr. Harrison, second by Mr. Shoemaker. Any further discussion? Okay, let's vote. All in favor of approving this?
One question.
Yes, please.
Now, this might be a kind of a dumb question. If, is there any problem, could something go wrong with this? I know that sounds like kind of a dumb question, but could there be some kind of problem with it or anything? Could it back up on our property or anything? Or is that kind of a dumb question? I don't know that much about easements or anything, but if somebody, if something went wrong with it, who would be liable for it?
Ms. Carpenter, this is a drainage outlet from our drainage system. It drains onto the adjacent properties. And what they're doing with this easement is they're going to be connecting to our drainage to allow it to continue to flow through their property, but only underground versus on top of the ground. So as far as having any issues with our property, it should not. They're all downstream.
Okay, so there shouldn't be any problem then with it? They're connecting to us then?
Yes, ma'am. Our outlet comes out near the edge of the property line, and then just basically sheet flows across the adjacent property, which is where the water went, you know, before it was even developed on the property. But in order for them to develop their property, they have to confine that flow and take it through their storm drainage system on their property, just to not, you know, cause it to have any impact on their property. And by protecting to ours, they can directly route it into their storm drainage system.
So they couldn't come back and say, oh, it messed up, you're gonna have to pay for something. So we're not gonna hold us liable on anything, right?
No, ma'am. Most of the water, we don't really care where it goes. That's their problem.
Oh, okay.
I hate to be said that way, but that's pretty much what it works.
Okay, well, I didn't want us to be setting ourselves up for something. Okay, that's all, that's all my only question. Thanks.
Okay, so we did have a motion and a second. We're ready to vote. So all in favor of approving this storm drainage easement at WR Odell Elementary School, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Nay? Okay, that motion will also pass at 7-0. We'll move on to 11.02, and just for your information, there were a couple items that were going to be voted on today, but we're not prepared to vote. There's information that was still needed. So we took those off the agenda for tonight, but they'll be back on our next meeting. So 11.02 now is the MOU for the EMS training, with the Concord High School, right? Mr. Parker, are you on with us?
I am on the call. Good evening, everybody.
Fantastic. Do we have any information from last week?
Yeah, this week, I did not receive any questions about the MOU that I presented. So I would appreciate your approval of the MOU.
Okay, board members, did we get our questions answered? Anything, any last minute And this, like you said last week, was to add the internships to this? Is that what?
We did. Everything previously, it just included the word clinicals. And so we made sure that we added internships to the document. And that was the main change to the document.
How many students did participate in this?
Oh, that program, it may be 25 to 30 kids. It's one pathway within the academy. So they also have fire and law enforcement along with that.
Right. Okay, let's call for questions. If we don't have any, I will need a motion to approve in a second.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. Harrison, a second by Ms. Grimsley, to approve the, where is it? The EMS Memorandum of Understanding between Cabarrus County Board of Education and Cabarrus County. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Say no. Hearing none. Well, that's, motion passes 7-0. Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to 11.03, which is 2020-2021 Academic Fees List. Mr. Alrad, are you on with us?
I am. Good evening. I know we had discussion about fees last week, and so if there are any questions, I'll take those now.
We had some fees, and we also had some legal advice. So we may be needing to approve this and then come back with some other additional items. Mr. Shaw, are you on?
Yes.
Can you go over what your evaluation was on that policy?
Yes. After the last board meeting, the question arose as to whether the board needs to approve school-based fees as well as system-wide fees. And I looked at the statute and also Cabarrus Board Policy. And I don't know if I have the policy handy right now.
It's on the board docs.
But it's pretty clear that all fees have to be approved by the board. It may not have been the practice, but I think that's what is legally required and required under policy. They don't all have to be approved at the same time. So it's not necessarily a reason not to approve the district-wide fees, but that's up to the board.
So we can approve the academic fees list, and then we'll gather the additional fees and approve those at a later date?
That would be fine.
Okay. Board members, comments, questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think it is likely going to take some time for the schools to gather those fees, because there are fees for lots of different extracurricular activities that may just arise somewhat at the last minute, you know, 10 minutes for, or $10 for the chess club, for example. I don't know what all of the small clubs and different activities might have fees, but I think that's going to take some time to gather.
Yeah, Mr. Alrad, maybe August? Would that be too early, or is it, would it take longer than that?
The only concern about August is I know many of the teachers that run clubs and organizations are 10-month employees.
September.
Yeah. I think if we do that when we get back to school, that'd be better, if that's okay.
That would be fine.
And then I would just like to suggest, too, that we think about some amount of flexibility, like a 10% margin of error or something. So for example, when organizations have competitions, so Vex Robotics, do they really know how much all of those items cost a year ahead of time? I know my girls were involved in the competition cheerleading. They certainly didn't know that. So I would say best estimate, and then you have a 10% margin or something of that nature, if that's possible. Because I think it's, it's going to be difficult. Now, band, we already had put a 500 limit on it, but we don't want to go put 500 limits on every activity a kid participates in. That's a bit high. So but I think that $500 was always in case, because they might be traveling to competitions and the fees to enter and whatnot. So I just want to make sure that we don't limit extracurriculars and clubs by having to approve a fee schedule with no flexibility.
I think, this is, I just want, Chris, I want to weigh in and just make sure that I think this will be a very large undertaking, and the board probably needs to start even with what is a fee. So is a field trip a fee? Do you place it on the list to say that we're, again, I'm just making something up off the top of my head, we're going to a play and therefore it's $5, but in the course of that, it gets raised to $6? Does that have to come back to the board? There's, there's a lot of money that may exchange. So is, again, is parking a fee? Is a yearbook a fee, even though neither of those is required? Is a field trip a fee? Is it, it doesn't matter if it's during school or outside of school? There's just a lot of things that, our understanding, Brian, Mr. Shaw, has always been that those things were not part of that policy, that they were outside of what were scheduled, you know, academic fees. So you may just need to talk about that at a policy committee, because just the act of defining the fee, I think, may take a while, just kind of food for thought.
I think that's a good discussion for that. There's a statute that says no fees, charge- no fees, charges, or costs shall be collected from students and school personnel without approval of the Board of Education. But there's also some case law on that as to what constitutes a free and appropriate, or not a free and appropriate, but a free public education and allows fees up to a certain level. So I think we can take it in the policy committee and have some clarification. It's, I don't, to me, a field trip that's a that's more of a reimbursement or covering an expense for a one-off item might be different than an academic fee.
Right, and I think that's always been our interpretation, Mr. Shaw, you know, like again, a field trip would, would, or a band trip would not necessarily be a fee. But I would just recommend if, if the, if we're going to go down the road, you probably, it has to start at the somewheres, if the policy is appropriate, if you think that's appropriate, Mr. Shaw. But just defining it and making sure, because I'm not sure the board really wants to take this on because it really will be an undertaking. Doesn't mean that we're not trying to, you know, put things out there. You just have to know exactly what you want to put out there. And if, and you want to make sure that Mr. Shaw lines up with kind of the faults of that legally because it, there's a lot, you know, if it is calendars and extra books for, you know, an AP class. Actually, I think that is on the academic list, but there's just a lot. So I, I think that would be appropriate, but would certainly defer to, you know, whatever the board wants to do.
And so can we ask the policy committee to look at this and see what would apply? To give us some guidance?
Sure. And this is Brian Shaw. I think one of the things that'd be useful is to have an identification of what types of fees there are. So rather than it just be discussed in the abstract, as Dr. Lauder mentioned, fee for this or fee for that, fee for field trip, fee for, what types of things are the schools charging for?
And we, do we not have a principal from elementary, high school and middle school on the policy committee? That could, that would know those items? Yes?
We do, from school to school.
Yes, we do. We have a representative from each school. Or from each level.
But also, it and the, it and the yearbook already listed on the schedule of fees?
It is.
So that's already listed?
Right now, we have five, five, actually, three academ, non-academic fees. And the yearbook is divided into elementary, middle, and high.
And Mr. Walter, on, on this particular topic, I think you are mostly interested in the band-related fees. Is that true?
That's not true, but that is one of the fees that was, again, charted. Things that parents would have to pay for to have their student participate in.
Yeah.
I think the board needs to at least see what those are and to see if they can.
And I'm going to use the example of, for example, and Laura is very familiar with this, but various high schools have sponsored Dream On Three, or they've sponsored the King of the Court, and those kids are buying T-shirts. So they don't have to buy a T-shirt, but they like to, to participate to show camaraderie. So does that become a fee because they're a volunteer with a certain activity? I think, as Dr. Lauder was saying, we kind of go down a very sticky path if we're looking at every possibility.
Let's get some guidance from the policy committee. Let them look at that and come back with a recommendation for us.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Ben, is it possible, and I, I'm sure there's, it's very complex, but is it possible, please, to consider any kind of prorating of large fees? And again, I'm just thinking of parking fees. If the COVID virus continues into September or October and schools are not open for some period of time, would it be reasonable to have some prorating, prorating mechanism built into our administrative guidelines or into the policy? I, I don't know how to define that, but I don't mean to make it more complicated, but certainly for the large fees which have a bearing on actual presence at the school or somehow a discretion for the principals to not charge, say, a full $100 when $75 is more appropriate for the period of time that the activity is required. I, I think, I hope you know what I mean, but there are many variations on that.
Just like many things, I think the school closures have forced us to look at some of our practices under a different lens, so to say. So I, I even think possibly a universal statement could be appropriate there. But we can, I'll put that down on the list and we'll add that to the discussion for policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think in that case, it's just going to be very important that we don't present with a proration concept with that, where parents may say, well, they didn't use that whole workbook. That workbook's not usable by anyone else. It's like if you buy it like an AP-type thing or test prep materials. I think if we start getting into that proration area, there could be a case for arguments that consumable supplies didn't meet the threshold of the, of the price, but yet we can't do anything else with some of those kits. So I think we have to be careful if we put too many qualifications on it.
I tend to agree with Ms. Furtenbaum.
Yeah, because the book had to be bought. And you can't just, what are we going to do? Rip out that pages they didn't use? I mean, you still had to buy the book and the book may cost $85. You know, maybe they didn't use those first couple pages, but that book still costs that $85 or whatever it costs. You know? The price is still there, so I don't think that's going to, they still gonna have to take that exam and it's going to cost that amount, so.
Okay, any other feedback before we, I'd like to have an action to at least approve the academic fee list?
I would make a motion that we, this is Carolyn Carpenter. I make a motion that we approve the academic fee list.
Second.
Mr. Walter, Chairman Walter, if we could just approve this whole list and not separate the top from the bottom at this time? So the non-academic fees, the yearbooks and such on the bottom, some of those contracts are probably negotiated very early in the school year. So if we wait, like even the transcripts, you know, those will be requested ongoing all the time. And if it's an unapproved fee, then the schools aren't going to collect the money to recover the labor they're spending on those.
Okay, I was just reading the board docs and it says academic fees list. But would you, Ms. Carpenter, like to amend your motion to include the five non-academic fees?
I, I'm approving, you're talking about both pages?
It's just the top and bottom of the list.
It's one page. In the bottom there, there's five non-academic fees.
Well, I, I would make it both, both, both list.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the 2020, 21 academic fees list with the non-academic fees on the same page, the five of those, which is graduation cap and gown, transcript, and then yearbook for high school, elementary, and middle school.
Yeah, who did the second? They need to second the amended motion. David?
David, you want to second that?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, let's vote on that. All in favor of approving the academic fee list with the addition of the five non-academic fees? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Say no. Okay, that motion passes. Thank you. All right, so moving on to our next item. This is eleven point oh four, which is School Resource Officer Program Contract with the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Department. And Brian Schultz and Kelly Clutz, are you guys still on?
Yes. Good evening once again. So this is the request for approval of the School Resource Officer Program MOU with the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Department. We presented that last week. We had one follow-up question, was a question from Board Member Furtenbaum during the meeting last week. And that was about whether or not the, the one resource, School Resource Officer assigned to cover ATL and Mary Frances Wall was adequate to cover both of the schools or if we potentially needed two resource officers there. I spoke with Lieutenant Andrews and she confirmed that due to the proximity and the nature of the schools, that, that those schools were easily covered by the, the officer there assigned to those schools and did not see that as one of the top needs that she had in terms of School Resource Officer coverage at schools. So with that, I would see if there are any further questions and then submit for approval.
Okay, board members?
Move for approval.
I'll second that.
Okay, so no further questions. We have a motion by Holly Grimsley and a second by Carolyn Carpenter to approve the School Resource Officer Program Contract with Cabarrus County Sheriff's Department. Any further discussion? Okay, let's vote on that one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. That motion passes seven zero.
Thank you very much.
Moving on, you're welcome. Moving on is eleven point oh five, which is Dell and Apple replacement cycle lease purchased. Mr. Dane Hughes, you on with us?
Yes, sir, I am. Thank you, board. We did have one question last week and I sent the board a more detailed quote for the Apple order to go with that lease. Other than that, that was our only question we had this week. So if I submit for approval and any further questions that you may have?
Okay, board members, did we get the information we were looking for? Are we okay with this?
Mr. Chairman, yes, I, I got that. And Dane, I don't seem to have an email from you earlier in the week with this, that the Safari attachment in board docs.
Yes.
That price is what I'll just call the street price, not a volume purchase price for the iPads. So I don't know, I guess I'd like to see if we can get a better price on those. And that's the challenge always with buying Apple products, is it's a monopoly. But there are different, if you do, do simple Google searches for the part number, the model, that, like I said, that's the street price. That's no discount at all for that volume. So I'd like to see if we can get a better price on that. So I would hesitate to approve tonight. Dane, can it wait until the end of the month when we have that meeting?
Um, it really needs to be approved so we can drop that PO on July 1st to make sure that we get them in by August. But what I can do, our Apple rep is on vacation this week. He's been texting back and forth. And he says as soon as he gets back in, that he would be more than happy to revisit the price with us and see if there is any movement in that, as this quote was done earlier. So if the board would have the pleasure of approving this as a maximum price, knowing that we may come in under that. Because, you know, you mentioned Amazon, but Amazon only has limited quantities and we cannot buy, you know, 500 devices from them. Other resellers like CDWG are restricted from selling to us. So we, we kind of have a limit of where we can go, but he said he would be more than happy to talk to us and see if there was anything he could do.
I, I would like to suggest that we approve the Dell quote tonight and we hold off on the Apple until our June 25th budget amendment meeting. If we approve the Apple quote tonight, there's no incentive to get a better price.
And Dane, I'm just not aware of what the conversation was with the representative. And a, you know, friendly discussion is one thing, but a pretty solid business understanding that the price will be revisited at a time in the future. I would just like to know that that actually will take place and we'll see hopefully a different price. Is it possible to report these prices after the, after those discussions?
Oh, certainly. Oh, certainly. I would be more than happy to report back. Anything I, if you're interested, I could even invite some of the board members to that discussion.
I'd be happy to lis, listen in and not, not, not get involved in y'all's actual discussion and that kind of thing, but to know the dynamics.
Yeah, I think it's, I think as board members, we need to stay out of that. I'm on the technology committee and I would not engage directly with a vendor. But I, I would like to ask the board to hold off on this. If, if he, if the main goal is to drop the PO on July 1st, as we normally do, once we hit our next fiscal year, then I think it can be prepared. And voting on the 25th will give sufficient time to get that PO created.
Ms. Ms. Clutz, can you weigh in on that? Kelly, you on?
Yes, sir, I'm, I'm here. Yes, the purchase orders can be ready and submitted after the June 25th meeting. That, that works okay with the, the financial side. Just rely on Dane for the, the, the vendor side.
Yes, ma'am. I can take care of that.
Okay, what's the desire of the board here?
And just, just to reiterate, I would just like to know that the prices we're looking at here were renegotiated and hopefully slightly different or significantly different prices actually did come to bear in, in the future when the, when the billing actually is done.
Ms. Furtenbaum said this is a street price essentially, so.
If, if there are negotiations, I would like to see the difference between these street prices and the final prices. Personally.
Right. Yeah, so we already have this one, so any new amount would be that difference. But some of you may remember before Dane had joined us in the technology department, we had this similar situation come up where we had a quote and again, it was the same vendor. And in about 15 minutes' time, obviously the person wasn't on vacation at that point, but in about 15 minutes' time, we had a 15% reduction in price, so.
Dane, please save us some money.
I, I can't guarantee that because these are models that are on phase-out anyway. So I don't know how much latitude we will have, but we will do our best.
Well, all the more reason they want to get rid of their supply.
Negotiate, negotiate, negotiate.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Dell lease documentation as presented.
So what are the, what are the amounts with that?
Uh, if it's correct in the agenda, the Dell amount financed is $484,468.42 over a payment term of four years. The annual payment being $121,109.7.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Ms. Furtenbaum, a second by Mr. Harrison to approve the Dell quote for $484,468.42 and to defer to the Apple till our next board meeting? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, let's vote on this item. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Say no. Okay, hearing none, that motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, board.
You're welcome. Okay, we'll talk to you on our, our next meeting.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then our last item, action item, was eleven point oh six. And this is a Curriculum Associates Elementary I-Rate Contract. And Ms. Hill, are you with us?
Yes. Yes. Good evening, members of the board. Tonight, I'm bringing to you the Curriculum Associates quote. Did receive an inquiry from the board regarding a multi-year contract. Shared that with you all this week. But would like to move forward with your approval of the contract as presented or quote as presented.
Okay, questions from our board members? Okay, if we have no further questions, does that need a motion? And a second?
This is Carolyn Carpenter and I move for approval as for, now where was that? That one is for the I-Rate, is it I-ready for that contract?
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, a second by Laura. All right, so we have a motion to approve the quote for $321,000. thousand, seventeen dollars and sixty-one cents for the Curriculum Associates I-Red Math for Elementary Schools. Any further discussion before we vote? Okay, hearing none, let's vote on this item. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed, say no? Hearing no, that motion passes seven zero. And again, we would normally have an adjournment, but we do have a need to go back into closed session, so if we could get a motion to go back into to closed session.
I make the motion, we go back into closed session.
Motion by Ms. Blackwell, sort of a second.
And Mr. Chairman, do we need to state the general statute under which we're going back into closed session, or has that already been stated?
I believe you are correct.
Just just for the official.
Can you help us there real quick?
Brian Shaw?
Yeah, sorry, couldn't find my my mouse. I don't think we recessed the old, we closed the old closed session, is that right? If we just recessed it, we just go back into it.
We did not recess.
We did not recess.
And it would need a new motion.
Okay, so what?
But it could just be the same as we had originally.
What's the citation?
It's for considered confidential personnel matters pursuant to General Statute one forty-three three eighteen eleven A six, and to consult with an attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute one forty-three three eighteen point eleven A three.
Okay, so Laura, are you okay with that motion? David, are you okay with a second?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's vote on that. All in favor of going into closed, going back into closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, that motion passes, we're going to say good night to our listener.